All right, the first item on the agenda is reorganization.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McGarryo. So, real quick, before we start, I just want to, again, once again, thank Mr. Ron and I all for the service to the school committee. And we'd like to welcome Nancy Waldron to the committee. So, welcome Nancy. First item of business this evening is to elect a new chair. So, I will turn that over to the committee to nominate someone for the chair position.
I move to nominate John McGarryo for the school committee chair.
I second that.
Do we have discussion, or do we have to?
Let's move in seconds, so there's no discussion. We can vote.
Okay.
Vote for both of them?
Yep.
Tim Canada? Nancy Waldron?
Chair, yes.
John McGarryo?
I guess I'll vote for myself.
Tony Matthews?
Yes.
Dan Rando?
Yes.
Congratulations, John, with the new chair. I'll allow you to finish off the process here.
All right, next is role reassignment. So, I was voice chair, and my research in Canada was secretary. Is that correct?
Yeah.
It's a lot rare that we've addressed that position, so... Any motion to reassign? Well, I guess we have to move on voice chair, so any nominations for voice chair?
I'm under it, too.
I mean, I'll second myself. Is that allowed? Can I second myself?
I would think, because the motion, it's not like, you know what I mean?
So, I get where else is scrambling for it, so... Any discussion? No. Let's take a vote on it. On favor of Tim Canada as vice chair?
Yes.
Yep, Tim Canada, yes.
Anyone else?
Nancy Waldron.
I'm sorry, I said...
You're going to vote for both of them, or?
I believe so.
Tim?
Yes.
Yes, Tony Matthews, yes.
All right, thank you, Tim. And leaving secretary. So... Any chair to nominate? Someone for secretary?
Nominate Todd, yeah. She's the very most principal around here, so... I second that.
Move to vote.
Tim Canada, yes.
Nancy Waldron, yes.
Yes.
Tony Matthews, yes.
Dan Rando, yes.
Fantastic. So...
Is it a new chair?
I guess we're just confirming on reorganization. Is that what this word?
So, after, I don't know if you choose to discuss, but there are different committees.
The subcommittees, you mean? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay. We did that separately last time.
Yeah, I think we were on one end.
That's why I put it on there.
Yeah, yeah, then volunteer for what you want.
I think the most important parts that we have are three different roles.
Should we, can I make a motion that, just in case, because we are still negotiating with the professionals, there isn't an officially done deal, we'll update that executive session, but just in case, I would like to move that Tonya and I stay on that committee for the sake of law and equity.
That sounds like a good, I second it.
I think it's fair to retain the current subcommittees until the end of the school year. I think I'll cover anything, then we can reorganize after that.
Okay. I'm technically not on that subcommittee. I stepped in because Ron couldn't do it.
Okay.
So...
I don't know, since it's wrapped up, we have one more meeting, or two?
We have the June meeting and then the meeting in August.
Okay. So, maybe by June, the negotiations will be wrapped up, or?
They would have to be wrapped up by June, wouldn't they?
I hope so.
Because of contract and stuff?
I believe the contract actually goes until end of August. You were both at the meeting, and I think we just wait for revised contracts from the attorney.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, everything, that's what I should have said.
All right, well, at very least, we'll have to revisit this, so I'll look back at the previous subcommittees, and we can reorganize from there, find out who wants to be what. I guess, do we need to vote on postponing that, or is that a reorgan?
While we're here, we might as well just continue it that way, just to make sure you keep your own record. So, motion to postpone voting on new subcommittee structures.
Second that.
All in favor?
Before we vote, Mr. Beiforl, think about if Ron was here, can I amend that so that I'll stay acting in Ron's role, negotiation subcommittee?
Josh, okay.
Yeah. All right, so then, all in favor with the motion?
Yes.
I.
Moving on to recognition.
All right, thank you. So, just a few shout-outs this evening. As you all are aware, this is the busiest time of the year. At least, it seems that way with all of our events. And we think we do also a great job of bringing new events, new speakers to our students, our families, and I wanted to publicly thank two members of the community, Silu Lomodowski and Hope Zinski, who both are part of our community outreach team as well. They worked very closely with Mr. John Diorio, myself, and both building principals for that matter, in organizing, we had our John Morel, our one-man kind of actor playwrights performance a few weeks ago. That show was presented to both our middle school and high school students, and our families had an option to come that evening. And we hosted over 15 different community vendors in our elementary school. Thank you again to City School Field for organizing that event as well. But I think those two individuals have been really instrumental apart in bridging that gap between the school and the community, so I want to thank them both probably. And that's it for recognition this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes. All in favor of approving the minutes as reported?
Right. Make a motion. Where's Ron? I had a cheat card.
I gotta give her a front line.
Yeah, I will make a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, April 22nd meeting.
Second.
Any comments?
John, your name's spelled right again.
Fantastic. So, you weren't butchered. I'm going to mistake it for a Scottish name. It's been spelled as a Scottish name before, it's fine.
Scottish?
Yeah, Macario.
Oh!
All in favor of approving the minutes as reported?
Correct.
All right. Any possible participation? All right, moving on, in communications.
We did have the email that came through from Vaughn Schlegel.
Right.
And so, is, oh, Mr. Diorio's on his side?
Yeah.
So, there was a little bit of correspondence between Vaughn, the school committee, and the principal of the high school in regards to looking at having an ROTC program.
That's correct. Sounds like...
Mr. Diorio said he was going to...
Yeah, just look into that.
Yeah, gave you the interest. In order for it to be free, it requires a certain amount of student participation, percentage of the student body, or 100 students, whichever is the smaller number. I think it's 10% of the student body or 100 students.
And we can just ask Mr. Diorio about that, I guess, too?
Any other communications? Student representative report.
I'd like to first just introduce Dante Jane Grande, who is our new student representative to the school committee, who's taking over for his sister Olivia, who did a fantastic job all year ago. So, welcome Dante.
Thank you. Past information, executive board elections. We held our student council executive board elections on Monday, May 6th, where we elected our new board for the 2024-2025 school year. Our new board consists of President Sophie Jane Grande, Vice President Sophie Dufresne, Secretary Whitney Reno, Treasurer Anthony Blanco, Historian and Public Relations Officer Caitlin Hartland, Spirit Coordinator Sarah Mosin, and LSAC Student Representative Dante Jane Grande. Teacher Appreciation Week. Our annual Teacher Appreciation Week was held from May 6th through May 10th. Each day, we gave out gifts for teachers. Then, at the end of the week, we held a Teacher Appreciation Breakfast for all staff, along with giving the staff their superlatives for the year. Upcoming information, Junior Conference Shatterdays. On Thursday, May 3rd, we will be holding our Junior Conference Event. This event will be for the 5th and 6th graders to give them the opportunity to learn about our school and student council. Along with Junior Conference, we will be working with the admin to schedule and organize the Shatterdays. Class Day Field Day. Class Day Field Day will be held on Friday, May 31st. Students will start in the day in classes and transition to the elementary school for the Class Day Ceremony, and then head into Field Day. Class Elections. Class Elections will be held on the week of June 3rd for rising 8th through 12th graders, and rising 7th graders will have their elections involved. Lock-in. Lock-in is going to be held on Friday, June 7th into Saturday, June 8th. This is an event for student council members only, where we stay over at the school and get locked inside overnight. We participate in workshops and run tea-building activities throughout the night, then we get to have free time. Last Day of School. On the last day of school, the Hanson family and student council work together to make milkshakes or non-dairy slushies for all students as an end-of-year sign-off. Non-Minutes Information. Social Media. We invite all community members to follow our social media accounts to keep up with all NBHS student council activities and events. Our accounts are Instagram and Facebook, @NBSTUCO. Student Council Meetings. All meetings are open to the school and community. Meetings are typically every other Monday in the high school kiva, starting at 6:00 PM and running until around 7:30 PM. Please feel free to join us if you have anything you would like to discuss, or would just like to see how things are run. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dante. Welcome. Thank you for the report. Any comments? No. All right. School Committee Reports. Reorganization. So, I guess this is something I'm going to have to reach out to Ron to get in touch with.
So, you guys made the representative now? That's right. So, at this point, there's been no communication since April 12th, after it was sent to DESI, the revised, revised version. Seems to be a bunch of lawyer stalking, and DESI's reviewing it. I reached out to Sheila LeBlanc today about that, to see if she heard anything that I hadn't heard. And then, I also reached out to the chair of that committee to see if there's something that we need to do, or something that's supposed to be going on. So, I think you guys have seen the original revision to the contract. I think they're just kind of working out nuances of language based on the red lines from DESI, but we need their feedback from that. So, no news to report, but hopefully I will hear something on that.
Thank you, Tim. Welcome. Financial Reports.
All right, so again, attached the financial report for this month, including assigned warrants, just for your review. Are there any questions?
There were a few account transfers in that packet, too, which we need to...
Student activity, elementary schools transfer, that was...
Well, I have a question in regards to the new budget that you presented. Is that part of your report? That's right there. So, that's part of your report? You go over that that we saw at the meeting?
Yeah, I told them the new number, and I can, we can hold presentation with the new number.
Okay.
Our press release, we have to vote to approve. The report says, signed, or is that already closed down?
Tim?
We don't need to vote on the, on the budget, I think we'll talk about it. It's just a chance for us to comment on it publicly, so...
Any other comments? Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. So, as asked earlier this year, I'm just providing an update on new hires and departures. We had one person in the department district, which I mentioned in my first bullet. As I mentioned earlier, in recognition, on Wednesday, May 8th, in collaboration with DA Joe Early's office, school council, community outreach committee, we hosted Axion John Morel for that one-man presentation for both our middle and high school students, along with our families. And, again, I think it was a great night where we addressed the topics of mental health, addiction, self-harm, and talked really about how we work with our families and our community to make sure that students and families feel they are supported as they transition through, you know, for public schools. Additionally, on May 8th, that same evening, we were awarded an additional $15,000 from the outreach committee to offset some technology supplies and software. We could ask for some more, and what I've been told is that there may be more money available. They are just trying to gauge who has spent what, so to speak, of the money that were requested in various different groups around the community. So, stay tuned with that. We have received nearly $50,000 in total from ARCA to offset, like I said, technology, some recycling costs. So, we appreciate all the support to our budget. And moving on to the next piece, I just want to, I know that this is a little bit unorthodox in the order. Last week, we had our budget hearing, which is typically kind of the final opportunity for people to gauge questions, or answer, to field questions, for us to answer those questions. I felt it was fairly well-attended. I didn't like to expect. We had strong representation from the finance committee, with some members of the community, with some staff members who were there. We talked about where the budget is at. The budget has changed quite a bit from when I first presented back in January. At that time, we're looking at nearly 11% increase from FY '24 and FY '25. With all the new information that we received, all the movement, if you will, with utter replacements, with transportation costs, and looking at our increased offsets through circle breaker, we are looking at a budget that is actually less than the budget from FY '24. We're looking at a budget that is $7,024,616 for FY '25, which, you take that number, and you add the additional $2.3 million offsets to get the total figure, if you will, but that $7 million number is a number that is our new FY '25 budget number. So, I think that is a voting item to move forward this evening, to vote in that new number for FY ' '25.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised budget number. What else? Trying to find the exact number that I'm...
Okay, so, 7024...
70, 7024610 and 89 cents. $7,024,610, 89 cents. I move to approve the revised budget.
One second.
Any comments?
Well, other than, you guys worked really hard on this. It seemed like a much tougher gap for you to spend that time on it, so it's good to see the revisions done as they have been.
No, I mean, it's definitely a team effort. We had a lot of discussions about this budget from January till now. Like I mentioned, we recently found out that circle breaker was funded at 70%, which is an increase from 56 that we originally looked at. And we had many conversations about, you know, that additional $200,000 that needs to eliminate from the budget. How do we close that $20,000 gap? And, you know, as we talked about last week, we've identified some positions that we feel are best interest of our schools, and are the least impactful for our state to move forward for FY '25.
Any other discussion? All right, so I'll take a vote on approving this new revised budget number of $7,024,610, 89 cents. All in favor? All right. Thank you.
All right, the next item, which, again, I brought to your attention, that we discussed at last week's budget hearing, are the reductions in personnel program. I identified three major spots, which combined were just shy of $20,000. So, the first was to eliminate the inter-reading curriculum, K through 6, from the budget. We were able to buy this curriculum with some cost savings or money saved from an unfilled position during FY '24, so we can eliminate that from the budget. We also landed on eliminating one full-time special ed teacher. Again, we had two openings this year, which was extremely difficult to fill. And looking at our numbers, and looking at what we can do with our current service for all our students, with our teachers and our professionals, we feel we have more than enough staff to make that work. So, salary plus insurance was roughly around $64,000 in savings. And the last piece, which is a change for the district, was we looked at, and I had this conversation with Mr. Creasy last year, just to kind of gauge where we were at, but it was something that we kept internal for the past year or so, was looking at moving our 6th grade students up to the junior, senior, and high school. Did a lot of research around this, and there's a group, which is called NELS, New England Lead Middle Schools, which is kind of like a middle school version of EAS, which really supports the middle school model in schools, in school districts around New England. And what we found is this is the preferred model for students. Keeping our 6th, 7th, and 8th grade students together in that cohort for that three-year time period is better for them for their instruction, better for their social, emotional well-being. It's just an easier transition for those students from middle school or junior high to high school. So, if we were to eliminate these two 6th grade positions, that would equate to roughly $104,000. Secondarily to that, we have the space, we have the team here at the middle school, the way that our junior, senior high school building is set up. We have the two separate wings. We have the middle school wing, which is closest to us right now. At the other end of the building is our high school wing. Our students really do not have any interaction outside of passing each other in the morning, at the end of the day. Lunches are separate, and activities are, for the most part, very separate as well. But this model really lends itself to making sure our 6th, 7th, 8th grade students kind of really are geared for success when they transition to the high school. And I think this is the model that we should move forward with, and I would like to message this to families and start to host some of those promotional meetings for them within the next week. I've attached in our packet the original memo that I gave you last week, which kind of breaks down from the talking points, but I've also attached a draft letter to families, basically saying the same thing, just, you know, why we're doing this, why this is good for your kids. And I also attached an FAQ sheet, which answers a lot of the questions that I think some families will have. What we intend to do is host the families and their students for an informational meeting with some of our current students, members of the student council, for example, to talk about what goes on at the middle high school. We do a very similar activity for our rising 7th graders currently, where we can make this for our rising 6th graders. And this is something that I think would really showcase what we do here, and give our students and families an opportunity to meet those teachers as well. I believe the date that I, we talked about some leadership team this past week was May 28th at 6:00 PM here in the kiva.
I think you have, yeah?
Yes.
Any comments?
Do you make a motion? To... This is supposed to be a voting item?
Yeah. Do I have a motion to approve this transition in, well, condensing and reorganization of the 6th grade into the junior high?
So, move.
Second.
Any comments?
I think it's important to note publicly that the plan is to keep the nature's classroom, which, I think kids start talking about that in 2nd grade, as they wait to get to 6th grade to go to the nature's classroom, so...
Yes.
That is like a, that's a major milestone.
Put that in there.
It's in both our memo and in the parent's letter, that the national, nature's classroom will remain a part of the 6th grade experience.
So, clearly, the 6th graders will then be on a different bus schedule than the elementary school kids. And, you know, I think that's another thing that will work out well is separating out the older... You know, I think that's another thing that will work out well is separating out the older kids from the younger kids as far as like any issues on the bus, as far as behavior or things like that. You know, there's a lot of, there can be a lot of conflict with older kids on the same bus as the young kids, from personal experience. So, my two cents on that. Any other comments?
No, I think it sounds like a good move.
All in favor of this reorganization of the sixth grade into the junior high? Thank you.
So, what I intend to do sometime tomorrow morning or afternoon is send that draft letter to families and invite them to that May twenty-eighth orientation meeting.
Yeah, would you start? Next thing.
All right. The next item I have is school choice, which is also something that the committee has a fault in their purview. So, two things here. One is I recommend the district to continue the school choice model, which means students can choice in North Forkfield and making choice out of North Forkfield. And then the second part of this is I've broken down the predicted class size for FY twenty-four, or school year twenty-four, twenty-five, and the number of seats available based on, right now, a cap of fifty per grade. Again, these numbers can sometimes be fluid. If we have, it'd be a great thing if we have influx of families coming into the town, that we need to look at some of these numbers. As of right now, as of May twenty-eighth, these are where those numbers fall. So, two parts, one, to continue school choice for twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and then looking at the numbers of students that we can allow in per grade. We're also allowing in pre-K and kindergarten, which is something that we have not always done in the past, but I think that we have seen a decreased interest of siblings and families that have younger children. I've done some research on this, and I think that this is something that we should be looking to maintain for the next year.
And the question?
Motion to approve this school choice, as it's in the memo.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, I'm looking at the pre-K numbers of twenty-eight students. How does that translate over to this model that we had approved last year? How many students are in the pre-K classes now? So, we have, how many open preschool classes right now?
We, well, we can't think about these classes, we have to think about those sessions.
Okay, yeah.
They're four separate sessions.
So, there's about seven kids in each class?
No, it should be seven and then eight peers, because we're really looking at opening these slots to attract the peers, because we've been having trouble gaining the peers in the district into the district.
Okay.
So, we're really looking at those slots as an effort to get the peers that we need.
So, what if the ratio was off of typical special needs children? Because the ratio has to be so many for each, right?
Right. And so, we talked to Desi about it, and Desi says we completely understand. Because it has been difficult lately to get peers into these programs, because so many parents are working full-time. And these are half-day programs, right?
Is there any talk of switching it back to the model that we had before?
That was not something that I felt as an interim was in my purview.
All right. Just for the public's record, since you can't see the numbers we're looking at right now, the total for all grades, predicted class size is four hundred and forty-eight, and the total seats available for all grades is two hundred and forty-six. So, we have roughly two-thirds.
Yes. So, if you look at the numbers of students, two seats available, once you get up to eighth grade, the number starts to drop pretty significantly. What kind of tactics or plans or ideas do you have to retain children in the town, excuse me, in the town to stay in their own high school?
Well, I think there's many different ways to look at that. One is, you know, we've looked, we've been looking at what do we offer our students, right? So, building programs that we didn't already have that will entice students to stay or come back to the district. I think what we just talked about tonight with having our sixth grade students come to junior senior high is also a way to keep kids in the district. They're going to see what goes on at the middle school, they're going to see what goes on at the high school. And our hope, my hope, is that they like what they see. We've done a lot of work, as you know, the last couple of years, looking at the curriculum, making that more engaging, more rigorous for students, preparing those students for success after high school. So, we're phasing in math, science curriculum. We're building that pathway for advanced manufacturing. We started a gaming club this year. You know, we're trying to keep our clubs robust. And, you know, the one thing you notice, we don't talk, and I never will talk about eliminating activities in clubs and sports for kids, but that is the worst thing you can do, trying to balance the budget. So, you'll never hear me say those things. And we want to keep as many opportunities for kids as possible. I think, you know, we've been trying to and we continue to look at how we do it. I know that student council is a great spokesperson for the school, that we use in the school. We try to market, we try to send out newsletters of our activities, we try to break that gap in the school and the community and make sure that partnership is strong and message out from those people. So, I think it's a combination of all those things. And, you know, we have the right people in the right places, we have some very strong building principals, and they are working every day to engage students and bring kids back to the district. It's a district our size, when you have a couple of kids or a handful of kids leave the district, it's impactful.
Right.
But it's also, it's impactful when those kids come back to the district. And we're seeing, you know, calls, I've received in the last month and a half from families looking to school choice their kids into our district, because it is a small community and they want that small field. And one of the reasons I put the pre-K and kindergarten numbers on there is because these kids are second, third graders with a younger sibling who's in kindergarten. So, we want to make it attractive for those families to come back. The one thing we can do, and we haven't done yet, is I think we can market and advertise our school choice numbers in the local newspapers, online, to let families know we have this many seats available, come to North Forkfield. So, that's the next step to this.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You could be arguing that, given a small number of each grade, there's a low ratio of student to teacher, and that's something that a lot of people look for. So, even with a full class, it's still low ratios.
Is there any type of open house for parents, student council, anything like that?
For...
For parents, for upcoming grades to come in and see?
Yeah, so, we're planning that May twenty-eighth, ninth for the rising sixth graders, so the fifth and sixth grade coming over to the middle high school. We do have an event coming up for our rising seventh graders, which we typically have with student council. We do an event at the end of the summer, in which we'll incorporate both sixth and seventh graders to come and visit the school and be at the school for half the day before school starts. But that event on May twenty-eighth is geared towards students and families, so we can answer their questions and hopefully ease their, if they have any fears about their transition, so they're well-formed. And we'll get this on the webpage. If we don't feel like we captured enough of that May twenty-eighth event, we'll host a second event.
And you did have, Mrs. Giorio, the open house for the high school.
Yes, and both schools.
That was recent, wasn't that two days you did that?
What's that?
Wasn't that two times, two evenings you did that?
Uh, we had an open house back in the fall. And a lot of the events that we planned, you know, is this last event we have for our guest speaker, and they are really inclusive of all families to come out and to see what's going on at the schools. And Mr. Creasy does a lot of events as well. Same thing, we have an arts night, I think there's a math night tomorrow, there's an arts night on Wednesday. So, those are other ways that we engage our families on a regular basis.
I think this is a good time to get these numbers out there, too, as the school year is coming to an end. You know, if you're going to switch schools, someone's going to choice in, time to do that is over the course of the summer and start right in September when everyone's been fresh and ready to go.
I agree.
Yeah, a lot of kindergartners coming in.
That's how many are on the census, so we're planning for all twenty-five.
Oh, okay, okay.
Any other comments on the school choice numbers? Do you have a motion to approve? Are we already, uh, all in favor of approving the school choice numbers?
Approve.
Thank you.
All right. The last piece under my report this evening is the introduction of our new director of student services, which we had a, I'd say worldwide, but a very extensive search. We were very fortunate, very lucky to get some really exceptional candidates for this position. You know, we're very lucky to have Ms. Knapp this past year as interim, who came to North Forkfield with a wealth of information, knowledge, experiences, and we're very happy and we commend you, Ms. Knapp, for all your efforts this year in kind of setting us up for success for the next year. But through this process, we made three rounds. We had our staff, support staff, a part of the initial round, including there's twelve staff members from both buildings who were part of the initial interview process. But throughout the whole process, Ms. Emery, Amy Emery, who she was tonight, was really head-trails above the rest. She has extensive experiences in both Billerica, Massachusetts, and also Connecticut. And, you know, one of the things that I was really excited about is her expertise around special education law, but also navigating, you know, kind of the grand reimbursement system that we have to use to support our special education tuition. She's very skilled with that. But just really, I think, has a great sense of what's best for our kids. And really, everybody who I talked to on the committee felt that she communicated that vision for our district and really making our students and our families feel supported and welcome through this process. So, Amy is here this evening, and I'd like to introduce her officially, formally, and if there are any questions, I know she's glad to answer any questions this evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm not a kindergarten.
Hi.
Hi.
So, I'm going to backtrack a little bit. So, we were told during the agenda for this meeting that we would be meeting, what's exactly it says? It says that we would be introduced to the new director of student services. According to the Mass Director Tracy Kopek Nowick, the school committee advised and consent to the leadership position of the director of student services. This includes presented information about the candidates and a vote. This is according to Mass General Law, Chapter seventy-one B, Section three A. And in our past experience as a school committee, this is what occurred, is that we voted on the approval of hiring the director, which is, the Mass General Law states, "A school committee with less than four thousand children enrolled in its school system shall appoint a person to be its administrator of special education." So, while you wrote to us quoting your contract, Mr. McCormick, it actually is the school committee's position to appoint so that you can hire for this position. So, we jumped the gun here and missed a step.
Well, as I said in my email earlier today, that process has been kind of skewed the last couple of years. If you recall, I don't know if you remember the committee, two years ago, that was not the process that we used?
Last year, we used this process?
I said, two years ago, that was not the process that was used. And then the meeting that we had with Ms. Knapp was a virtual meeting, and I don't recall if there was a vote or not, to be quite honest with you. It was not a public...
There was, John and I were there.
I was, I was over at McDonald's when we got on.
Yeah. It was done the right way last year, what happened.
Well, I...
According to Mass General Law.
I think that what, when I talked to the former chair, who's no longer on the committee, there was some, ink, is the right word here, there was some kind of, it was uncertainty of how he wanted to proceed. So, what we named it on, what I named it on, is what we're doing this evening. And I think that, I mean, we could make this into a voting motion, but this is the candidate, this is the person, this is the person that the committee in all three rounds felt was best for this position, hands down. I think that, you know, to belabor that would be a mistake. I think that Amy is the person for this role, and she's the person for North Forkfield for the foreseeable future. When I talked to colleagues around this process, colleagues that I respect and trust to, or superintendents, they really, what they said to me was that if there is an absence of a policy in your district, it's really the superintendent who is giving this person to the school committee, but it's their recommendation for the school committee.
So, we have differing opinions from the Mass Association, from the director of the Mass Association of School Committees, and then the people that you talked to, and according to Mass General Law. So, we have a discrepancy on what we believe on how this hiring should occur?
Well, we could resolve this if we make a motion and just vote to approve the appointment.
I just like things down the way Mass General Law says, instead of just being presented and usurping the school committee's purview that we have, which is part of our purview So, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'm moved that we appoint Amy Emery as the director of student services.
A second.
Any other discussion?
I have a question. We can ask the candidate, right?
Sure.
Yeah. So, I was just wondering, in terms of your resume, which was very vast, by all means, a lot of experience on there, why were some of the things out of order on the resume? Was it the formatting, or do you think?
Which parts would that be?
The experience sections were out of order.
That's probably, that's the school spring how it gets printed out, so that's not...
The formatting error?
Yeah, that's the program we use.
Yeah, I do, I do, based on what the fields are in school spring, so, versus what you might typically put in as a, in order as a, like a set aside resume, in school spring it requires you to put it in the fields as they pop up.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And what brought you to North Forkfield?
Good question. So, I have a wide range of experience in Billerica, which was a larger district, more of a medium-sized district. So, as I had told the committee and him as well, as, along the various ways of the different interviews, really was looking for a school district that really would allow me to take my experience and be able to work directly with families and students and staff, to be really able to build capacity and work with staff directly in terms of how they can support students more directly and to work with families and students in providing that free and appropriate public education more directly. You know, often when you work in a much larger district, there's more of that distance between the two. And in my experience, I've had that wide range, and really, at this time of my career, I really want to get back to that connection with staff and students and parents. It's what fuels me in terms of my passion and the fact that I've had the wonderful opportunity to have done all of what I've done in my career. I want to look at this time in my career to be able to do something that fills me greater at that student, parent, staff level. And that's really what I saw North Forkfield allowing me to do. It allows me to still be close to my home in Connecticut and my growing grandchildren and my family, but still allows me to be challenged professionally. I think Massachusetts as a state does a really wonderful job of supporting students and families, and so that allows me to... and so that allows me to stay in a state that does that, and yet still, you know, be close to my own family. So, yeah, I felt it was, you know, a nice connection. And then I know Park Field is, North Park Field is really working on its own strategic plan. I have experience in strategic planning. I see that as a wonderful opportunity to see the school district grow, and I have seen how that can take a school district to the next level, so that excites me on that, again, that professional level as well. So it just really had all of the sort of callings that I was looking for. And after meeting the staff and administrators on the first round, it just was a nice click for me, and the authentic connection that staff and administrators had for kids and the jobs that they do here was very eminent. So it was kind of a perfect fit. So I'm excited.
Thank you.
I have a question. Are you still with the Colchester homeschools?
No, no, I'm not.
So are you employed at a different school?
Nope, not now.
Okay.
Ready to start July 1st. And she was able to talk a little bit with Ann today, who I was waiting to start, you know, coming here for the meeting and talk a little bit about some transition things, so, you know, be ready to start on the 1st of July.
So there'll be no overlap? You said your last day was June 28th?
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? All in favor of accepting Amy Emery as the, appointing the, sorry, all in favor of accepting, of appointing Amy Emery as director of student services? Welcome. Moving on, administrators' reports. So to elementary school.
Hi. So as my report says, and as Matt mentioned, we also celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week at the elementary school. The PTO did a great job of showing our staff their love and appreciation from some different things each day of the week. We are testing for science, technology, and engineering this week for grade five. We finished math last week, so this will be our final round of MCAS testing. We're hosting bike to school on Wednesday of this week, which is always fun, we haven't done that in a while. We have, as Mr. McCormick mentioned, tomorrow night, our math and summer reading kickoff, so it's a sort of math and literacy night combined, that is from 5 to 7. And then we also have the arts night Wednesday evening, 6 to 8. I didn't mention that in my report, I forgot to include that, but that is also happening Wednesday evening. We had a book fair last week, Ms. Cavanagh and Ms. Adamitis, our librarian, did a great job organizing that, always a fun spring book fair. But the piece I really wanted to highlight was our work with the Safe and Supportive Schools Grant Team, which we are working on a number of projects, one being break spaces. I included a picture in my report of some of the spaces that teachers have created in their classrooms, and it's just an opportunity for students to take space away from their learning, their work, to reset, refocus, and while maintaining their presence in the learning environment, which has been really great. We had a staff meeting after school today, and I asked the staff to share out how they felt the break spaces were working, and they said the kids are using them, they are using little timers to set timers for themselves to take those breaks. They do, you can see in one of the pictures, there's like the infinity breathing, so they trace the infinity symbol, and they do their breathing and counting. There's fidgets available for them to kind of get some sensory input, things like that. So that's really exciting, that all of the classrooms will have those. We had, some of our classrooms had them, a lot of them had them prior, but now all of the classrooms have them, and so that's really awesome. We also did some school-wide assessments using the Sabres tool, so you can look that up, it's accessible online, it's a free assessment screener, and we screened all the students in K 3 and 5, just to kind of start to collect some data on different, you know, age groups to start building in where we believe some interventions could be useful. And from that data, we developed some social groups. We partnered with Behavioral Health Network, and we are offering two social groups for students, and one is for social skills, which they do with Legos, which is really fun. And then the other one is for anxiety, because students sort of are in the older age bracket. I sent out some newsletters on those earlier last week, I think, for information if you're interested, if a child's interested, they're still in those groups, but so far, the groups have been meeting, and they've been having a really great time, so. The last thing I highlighted in my report was the 1-8 Applied Learning Grant Conveting, which Mr. Kefley and Mrs. Marr attended for Project Lead the Way. They are gonna be our teacher champions when Project Lead the Way is starting next year, and our goal is for them to sort of be like the, train the trainer model, where then they would train some of our teaching staff to implement Project Lead the Way in their classrooms at their grade levels, which would essentially be our science curriculum, in alignment with the national science standards as well as our safety standards.
Where is the bike to school starting?
We start at the municipal lot across from the police department, it's the highway department's parking lot, and the police will kind of station themselves along the route from there to the school, kind of providing safe passage for the kids. So I gotta dig my bike out, and I have a go with a rusty old chain, but I don't care, it's gonna be fun.
How do the bikes get home?
The kids park them, and they either bike home, or the parents come pick them up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just checking.
Most parents' bikes come pick them up, I think, because they're not all there at the end of the day. The parents come during the day to go.
Okay.
Thank you. It's a good flat roof, too.
Actually, I like it, yeah.
Might just lay down some gnarly hill.
Go any further, and you're gonna go into the hills.
We're gonna start at School Street.
Yeah.
Mrs. DiOrio is not here. Let's see.
Yeah, Junior Brown, Junior Senior Brown.
I was gonna say the...
That's a nice spot, Zucca's Falls, it was far.
Did you DJ?
No.
You didn't?
No, I didn't.
Not invited this time?
No, they didn't. I played oldies.
Destination of oldies is changing.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Those are the creditations visit.
That was great. We, yeah, as Mr. DiOrio mentioned, we had a guest, a senior visit, so they spent three days in the district, or in school, meeting with teachers, students. We just had, you met with a member of the team. So we should receive our official report from the ask in late June, which will be shared with the committee, posted on the website, but overall, very positive visit, and I think that, you know, one of the great things is that Mrs. DiOrio having, having ongoing conversations with the visiting chair many months prior to the visit, so they knew exactly what was going on, and then they knew what's expected to make of that.
I really liked in his report that on May 10th, the seniors went to credit for life, sponsored by Country Bank, to learn about financial literacy. That is a... I wish I had that before I was... Might not have gone to college, actually. But those sorts of things that, you know, it's good to see the school, Mr. DiOrio, reaching out and doing things like that that are, you know, not necessarily part of the state-required curriculum, but something that's gonna really benefit kids down the road. Kids, basically, at that point, so. Last day for seniors is May 23rd, senior banquet May 31st, and graduation on June 2nd.
Yes.
I worked on your speech, Joe. Chair speaks at graduation.
I do not know.
I didn't laugh in my ear, did I?
I was gonna tell you that till after your chair. I've done plenty of public speaking, so. Let's see where we're at.
The secretary gets assigned diplomas, that much I know.
Yep. All right, administrators' report. That's sort of our old business.
No, we had student services.
Oh, we?
We can't let Ms. Knapp not have her last...
Sorry about that.
No, I actually have one more. Oh, great, June, ended June, okay, sorry about that. Not kicking you out, not kicking you out. So again, the result, mine is sold out compared to Sarah's. I always feel guilty. "The results of preschool screenings have been sent out to parents, and parents of students who have contact developmental concerns were contacted for potential evaluation. All three-year and annual review IEP meetings for the remainder of the year have been scheduled. The extended school year ESY forms containing a parental, a parent response section have been sent to parents, and a majority have been returned to the district. This year, we did it a little differently than has been done in the past. There was a single form that provided parents with a description of the services their children were eligible for in ESY, and then we asked parents to identify which weeks their children would be attending the program. The requests for program and student observation forms have been updated and disseminated to appropriate staff. It was not one universal and concise form that was in line with regulation, and that's been taken care of." Thank you, Sarah. For all of the forms you sent us.
I'm glad Caitlin was able to promote them all together.
One. And thank you, Caitlin, as always. Work on updating the process and procedures manual for student services continues with the aim to have it completed by the end of June. I will just say that the last one that I inherited was 21 pages. We are now up to 51. So that there have been a number of additions and clarifications that I think will be, will make things much clearer for staff as they go forward. And finally, the school choice special ed increment dossier report has been certified, so we're good with the state on that one. That's everything. Any questions?
Thank you. See, technology update, Mr. Atkinson. All iPad's purchase in 2020 and 2022 here have been updated. Most ProBooks have been updated to version 1.5. Digital progress reports should have been available on May 17th. School brings transition to Alma SIS progresses 55% complete. Camera system update, including three new outdoor cameras and a switch from analog to digital has been completed over April break, and an overhaul in climate forms on the old school website is in progress. And not in the packet we have in front of us. Still the issues that have been addressed and to be addressed. Mr. Cor... Is this the flashing lights, is that part of the alarm system? On there?
No, that is the, no, that's the 20 mile an hour flashing lights on the, I think I didn't know, right there, from the elementary school. One of them was not working appropriately, so it was having to be fixed by electrician.
I didn't, I would have thought those were the highway department, not the school department.
No.
And the hair complaint, what is that regarding?
That's regarding asbestos, so we were, we found out that we had not had an official asbestos kind of walkthrough, if you will, since 2017, so we had something come out, and it's a few things we need to address, just to be compliant. This is, this is something that's been happening across the state. I think it was kind of a lull, if you will, during COVID, and now that we're out of that, the state's looking at just making sure we're, they're compliant.
I think that's like labeling and picture things are compartmentalized.
Yeah, I mean, this building is fine, it was built in 2005, it's the elementary school that had some spaces that were, haven't identified, and they're either, they're not where students are regularly. I mean, the only thing that, is always a situation in an old building is, are the tiles, as long as that they are sealed or repaired necessary, then they're usually fine. So that's something that, you know, we wanna just look at and make sure we address all those concerns.
Any other comments on the W issues? All right, I think that's it for administrative reports. Old business.
So at the last meeting, we did, like I did say, they were still waiting for an ALPAC inventory. I was told tonight that it has been completed, but we have not yet received it, so I will again reach out and see if we can receive a final copy, and I will once again attach it to the junior committee meeting minutes or agenda, so we have a complete picture of what is in our elementary school basement, from school supplies to ALPAC to our emergency management system, our best group, that is also using that space to house some of their supplies.
Moving on, anything related to policy? No, any new business? All right, no new business. Except on the agenda is an executive session, so I move that we...
Do you have anything, or have you...
Yes, we have.
Oh, we are?
Just an update to the committee on the most recent negotiations.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
So I have a motion to adjourn the regular school committee meeting and do a new session.
Only to reconvene to adjourn the meeting, right?
Correct.
That we usually say, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do a roll call vote for this one.
We're gonna allow Caitlin to...
Yes, and, yes, an amendment, an amendment to that, that can be allowed to stay recorded. Roll call vote, all in favor?
David, yes.
Nancy, welcome.
John, you're a yes?
Wendy Matthews, yes.
David, yes.
All right, thank you everyone.